Ready to roll?
Are we ready to kick this off?
We are.
Yes, I think we're ready to kick this off.
Yep, we have Hallie up and ready to go as soon as you pull it all together.
Let's uh let's kick off this work session meeting. Hallie, you ready?
There she is.
I am there.
There you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Let me share my screen here real quick. Alrighty. Hold on. There we are. Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Um, tonight, we're going to be discussing uh the town hall site selection. Uh as a reminder, um, this is being funded by a DOLA grant that we have received from um regarding the site selection and space needs. Um, tonight, we're just trying to get back on track. Um, this project has kind of been delayed due to the pandemic and um just some rearrangements and staffing. So tonight, we're trying to really receive some high level feedback from you all regarding the location and some of your priorities you'd like to see moving forward. So as a reminder where we've been, we received that $25,000 DOLA grant for this study. Um, the town selected to hire infusion architects and they have been working with us since um early of early 2020. Um, in March, they hosted two public outreach meetings in person. Um, and then right after that last meeting was when the pandemic hit. So um after that, it kind of got delayed. Um infusion did manage to meet with every department within the town and also with Lammer County Sheriff's Office and the Fire District to determine some staffing projections. Um, and with that delay and some other needs, um town staff and the board trustees realized that the space needs were more of an immediate issue. So there were some um explorations of other options, and that's what led to our Harrison House expansion. Um, just as a reminder, the Harrison House expansion is delaying that town hall project um so that the town and the board of trustees can focus on those pressing needs of the wastewater and water treatment plants. So by no means is this us rush uh jump into the gun of getting this uh town hall built. But it's more um trying to maintain our um standards with our DOLA grant and making sure we can at least get a site selected for the project um with construction being more down the road.
Hallie, would you please repeat what you said about the Harrison House expansion interfering with anything? What'd you say?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that this um Harrison House expansion does delay the construction of our town hall site. Um, because we are meeting that immediate needs for space. Um, but rather, this is this process for selecting a site does not mean that we're rushing to build this town hall. It just means that we're trying to maintain um the regulations within our grant, which will expire this year. So we would like to select a site um before that funding.
I'm only I'm only asked the question because these these two projects are independent of each other. Why would one affect the other?
Correct. I it mostly was just so with a lot of the um discussion early in March of 2020, we didn't know that we would have an immediate space needs um solution. So there was more of a um heightened rush to get this town hall project on the on the ball because we wanted to maintain um keeping our staff together. So since we have that Harrison House project, we do not need to rush toward town hall. Okay.
Good enough. Thank you.
Alright, so um where we are going, so we want our uh DOLA grant originally had a um deadline of March 30th of 2021. Um, we have now gotten an extension for that, so we have this grant funding until September, so that kind of eases some pressure of us. Um, and so tonight I have Randall Johnson on the on the line. He is um the co-founder of Infusion Architects. He's been working on this project. And so he's going to go through with you guys um the community engagement data from last March as well as the staffing projections. Um, this is just going to give you the opportunity to kind of see um the footprint of the building and how much space um they think that we would need now and in the future. So you can determine um what kind of site you'd be looking at. And then there are some major questions that we kind of want to address tonight um from the board. Uh determining whether we were looking for a campus of municipal buildings on this land that we will um determine. Or if you prefer there to just be a single building for a singular town hall. Um, there needs to be a consideration with the partnerships with LCSO and the Fire District because there will be response times necessary based on the location of the building. Um, the location, whether you would like to see it in downtown or in the new development areas. Um, and finally, if you'd like to prioritize town-owned land that we already own currently versus new land over some of the other priorities. So um I actually think I'm going to ask Randall to step in um just in between here. I think it'll be most helpful if you guys kind of see the data from um the community engagement portion before we move on to the questions and addressing those. Randall, are you online? There you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Um, Hallie, how much time do I have? I just want to make sure that I'm not going way over my timeframe. We have to talk here.
That is more of the mayor than me to.
You got as much as you need, Randall. Let's hear it.
Alright, well, good seeing you guys again. It's been a little while. Um, hopefully, you're all doing well and made it through the holidays okay. Um, we've been talking a little bit over the last month um with Kelly and and probably since back in November about site selection and uh as probably most of you know, Pete Kelly with CBRE was engaged by the town to begin to start to look at the sites available around town. And um he has done an initial site review and a site search, um began kind of digging into the data that. And really where we landed on was Kelly really feeling like we should go back and revisit kind of the information that we've gone through, make sure everybody leading into this next year is kind of on the same page again. So we can give Pete really good direction as to where to go. Um, Pete and I, and and he can speak for himself, but he and I just had a recent conversation and one of the things he said is there are property that's out there and the property data that he's pulled has been property that has a sign up in front of it or is for sale. Um, oftentimes, properties and projects like this, um, they need to go knocking on doors and do a little bit digging beyond just what is out on the market right now. Uh into that second level as to, you know, who might be wanting to sell. Um, and who might uh be willing to sell those in offer. And Pete can kind of address that a little bit more of it. Then I want to kind of bounce back and address what we're looking for based on the data that we've collected over the last year. So Pete, I don't know if you want to just give a little bit of a rundown of what I just talked about.
Uh, well, thanks, everybody. I'm glad to be here. And Randall, thanks for the introduction. Uh, we have done a little bit of work and um what uh my history has been doing a lot of site selection for, you know, entities, large entities like yourself and trying to figure out how to maximize location and assets and returns. Um, so try to ask a lot of questions and what uh I think the team has kind of put out are some of the questions that we're looking for guidance for from you all as to what we're looking for. Uh, we did present a list of listed sites. Uh, didn't really know where to start without that, but for everybody here, it is important to know that I fully expect that we need to go and find unlisted property. And and the solution may not be on paper already. But for us, the fun is to work with you and and uh the process of trying to, I guess, define the decision criteria and maximize the opportunity. So thanks for letting me be here.
Yeah. So a little bit of backstory and trying to kind of bring you back to what we've done over the last year besides um fight a fight a pandemic. Uh, we were able to be pretty successful uh during this past year, meeting with all the groups and getting data from them. As Hallie said, it started with that initial um two days of outreach to the community. And really what came out of that was an understanding of um really what people were looking for. And at that time, um, it was really one of those things that I think most people felt. Um, like, they wanted to see a larger piece of property that could house um, you know, more than one um town project, whether it's now or in the future on its site. Um, that that there was the sense that they wanted to have, you wanted to have, and the town wanted to have more of a town complex. Um, not just a single piece of property that could house the town hall. Um, I think also a big piece that came out of that was majority of people were in favor of putting the town hall somewhere um in a growth area. Um, whether that's out to the east or up north versus putting it on property that might be on Main Street where you could utilize that property for gaining more tax revenue um and for um, you know, sales and commercial use there versus putting it on uh right on the the main street. Um, so that was kind of the big pictures, I think, coming out of that. And we can go through the data if you want to pull that up. Hallie, we can, but that's kind of the the general rundown. And for some of you, um, if you recall that, if you would like to chime in on that, I think that's pretty much where we landed with it is the 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 majority of people kind of spoke in that that form.
So I had a quick question in regards to the campus, because I remember that there were some ideas put out there about doing like a campus or complex. Um, and I know you'd said a majority, and I see like the one that says 13%. Was there a separate study that you were getting the majority of people um wanted to want to see some type of a complex?
Um, well, these were, I I guess, the of the some of the votes bringing this up, if you take a look at it, um, I guess of the people that spoke about it, that was one of the larger, they got the majority, the most votes was for a town complex. So um if you go down to the next one, if if you're looking at this one, um, location topics, for example, um, you know, infrastructure for larger town growth, um whether that meant um that with this project, it could be a catalyst for future growth. Um, and uh and actually expand utilities that might lead to to future growth in that area. Um, it was one of the things, building on their own land was 10%. Um, trying to read that piece of it. Um, utilizing town uh existing town properties to fund the town hall was a big piece of it. Economic impact where it's located um was another piece of it. Um, you go to the next slide. Now, I guess I, sorry, that gets into the town side of it. The municipal complex, here's one from a campus topic. 25% of the people felt like of the 25% of the total votes, not 25% of the people, 25 of all the total votes um wanted to see a municipal campus. Um, uh, so when you're taking a look at it, it wasn't, it's a total of all of the votes on this topic, 25% of those um were for a municipal campus. So it wasn't a vote like um of everybody here, how many people think it should be? What we did was um we, everybody had the chance to put up what they felt um, anything they had uh to say about location of the town hall. Um, the town hall complex was one of those topics. And of all of the votes for everything, the town hall complex was 25% of those votes um for it. So it wasn't necessarily a majority uh based on voting on a single thing. It was a majority of people voting on the entirety of the of the possibilities. Does that make sense? I'm not sure if I'm.
No, I I guess I'm a little confused because I I understand looking at this graph at 25%, but this is all specific campus topics. So it only deals with the campus idea. It doesn't look at anything else. So I guess I'm a little confused because, I mean, maybe it's just a 25% was town. I that, I mean, I heard the idea mentioned. I heard that several people had brought that up. Um, but I don't recall call that being like the overarching theme that everyone was saying, hey, we need to have this. I I think I remember the idea of you need to have the town services in one place. But there's a big difference between town services in one place and putting everything in one location because it obviously requires us to have a much larger um piece of land and a much larger and more expensive facility.
Um, and I I'd be happy to kind of, yeah, go ahead.
Can you share where you pulled this information from? Because I think that's important because this came from, I believe, the two community engagement groups, right? And there were uh like scheduled times that people could come in, and then there were a whole bunch of topics that people wrote down, and then you had like six dots, and then you put your dot on the six things that were most important to you. So some of the things that were up didn't even make the list, I don't think. Um, some of them were voted on more than others. Some of them were similar wording, but a little bit different. So I think they were just trying to generalize or capture all of the information in like a statistical way from that community engagement. Is that is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, and I we can, I I'd be happy to sit down. And John, I know I'm pretty sure you were at those meetings as well. Um, I'd be happy to go back through the data with you and kind of understand it um in a in a bigger sense. But that's exactly right, Ashley. We had 150 different items that might have been on the board uh in each of those those nights. Um, when the majority of people put all their dots on it uh on the topics they felt the most strongly about, some of them didn't have any dots, as you said. Some of them had one dot on it, and then others had um a lot of dots on it. And that the the town hall complex is one of them that had one of the most amount of dots. So I'd be happy to kind of go back through there and look at that with you. But um, that that was kind of how it was derived. We never put up um, you know, the town hall as a singular versus a town hall complex. Now, everybody vote, and then there was no majority or anything. It was simply a tabulation of the people that were there, what they felt was most important at that point. And really, like I said, it's, and I said it in the meeting, this really isn't to decide anything. It's really for information for you as a board to discuss what you feel like is the best thing. You know, this wasn't a community involvement. You don't bring people in, take a vote, and then go with what they say. You know, ultimately, they're help, they're asking you as a board to gather the information and and then utilize that to make the decisions. Um, if you need more information, then we certainly can provide that. This was just one, like a kickoff tool to give you a sense of what the temperature around the community was around the town hall location. Um, and, you know, that was a topic that had uh a lot of votes. You know, if you look at it actually between um that and locating it maybe on Main Street or as a singular, um, it was, you know, it 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 provide, it had a lot more votes. But does that mean that that's the way that you've got to go? No, it doesn't doesn't necessarily mean that. Um, any other questions around that? You are right, though. When you start to talk about looking at pieces of property, when you're talking about a town hall complex, you're talking about the opportunity to capitalize on a piece of property um at a point in time that you may be able to utilize in the future. You know, that maybe you are not developing it um all right now. But you what you are doing is setting aside the ability to develop it in the future. Um, if you take a look at the data on where the the size of the project came in at, for the town hall complex, you need somewhere around four acres to do it right and to have room to expand that property in the future. Can be in a lot of different configurations, but it probably need about four acres to park it to have some expansion room, to have good access to it. And so you could look for four acre properties. Um, but is there an eight acre property out there, 12 acre property that you could you buy now um at today's prices and hold for the future? I think is really what the question around that is.
So so Randall, four acres covers the town hall. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And you need about another four acres or more to get the rest of it. Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think the rest of it is um, you know, kind of is a bit of arbitrary, you know? What do you want to put on that down the road? Do you want to put a campus that would have a future rec center on it? Um, a future library, a future public works facility as part of it. Um, so yeah, that's the that's a big question uh that that I think we're revisiting again tonight is, you know, are we looking from uh just uh kind of focused on just town hall? Or is there opportunities out there for you to think bigger picture in the future? Okay, when we when we were hired, it was find town hall, find a spot for town hall. And we could keep on that direction. I think the question was just was brought up at some point. You know, should we be thinking about more land for the town at this point versus just the town hall? And that's really for you guys to decide.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, Hallie, on your slides, what else you have, but if I could share my screen, I could show you a few other things too.
Right ahead.
And I think for the most part, um, Kelly has shared this with you um over the last year, but can everybody see that site plan?
Yep.
So we went through a series of um programming sessions with uh all the town departments as well as um the Fire Department and and Lammer County Sheriffs. And really sat down and drilled into what, how many staff was there today and what the future growth over the next 10 to 15, 25 years might be. Even, you know, trying to understand and look out there a a bit. When we did that, um, the the total came up to be around a 28,000 square foot facility. Okay, and that includes um some very large spaces for um a multipurpose room and board chamber area. Um, you know, it includes room for the Fire Department, for Lammer County, the entire project, and I'll show you that a little bit. But when we finished with that, we took a look at that and said, okay, 25 or 28,000 square feet likely on two stories, not just one, but 28,000 square feet. Uh, how would that lay out on a generic piece of property, which is what this exercise was for? Um, and how would we plan to have some parking in the future and some expansion of the building in the future? Um, or the the expansion with the parking to carry it. So as you see up on the north side, it's kind of green still, but what that accomplishes is two stories of of future uh build out and then the parking to accommodate that. It's right around 3.72 acres, three, three and a quarter, three and three quarters acres um that would accommodate about that size of building. Um, now, whether that building goes up or down, or, you know, we build less now and you allow for more room and expansion in the future, I think you're still looking in that ballpark of around that. Um, we did do some initial studies that started to look at the how the building might lay out and how the adjacencies might work. We met with all the departments at that time, discussed how the the layout of the 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 building itself would work, how the adjacencies would work. We began to make some changes to that right about the time we decided to dig in on the site. And one of the things that we determined at that point was if we buy, for example, a long skinny site, um, then this project probably changes quite a bit. It's not so much a square. It's more of a long and linear design where maybe there's separate entrances for multiple departments versus a singular entrance where all the departments have access offered. So at that time, we determined, let's kind of see what comes out from the site study, and then we'll adapt this drawing and these adjacencies to a couple new site plans that will give you a better idea how it will lay out. Um, but in general, um, we got great feedback on the size of the project, great feedback on how it should lay out and the adjacencies we should have. And um, I feel like we're at that point now where we really want to start to look at a few different properties out there and then lay this in specifically onto those sites. Um, and also start to look at, okay, if we go on site A, all the utilities are in the street. And so the cost to develop this is X. If we go with site B, we're bringing utilities into it at a cost of X. Um, so I think we're really at that point where we've come full circle back to you saying, all right, we're ready to really select and go after some specific sites. What do you want us to look for? You want us to look for four acres? Do you want us to look for eight acres? Do you want us to look for 12? What is the thought process? Has it changed over the last year? And and really cut Pete loose to go find it, you know, and again, cut him loose to go find it, whether it's currently listed or cut him loose to go find it. Um, you know, through the grapevine and through talking with people and through knocking on doors and talking about where best we should locate this property. Does that all make sense?
Those to me.
So I think that's really what tonight is about. It's kind of to come back and say, here's what we've done over the last year. Um, we need some direction from the board um on how to narrow it down. Um, especially Pete. He's the one out there trying to find the sites. So having a little bit better direction or, you know, further direction and updated direction from the board on what we're looking for is really where we're at. And then we can put these plans uh down on that site and really start to begin to do an evaluation um monetarily uh about what site might be the best to to take a look at.
Well, well, right now in the packet, Randall, I've I've only got two sites. Do we have more than that?
Pete, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Um, I'd just like to clarify, Mayor Hammond, those are just the sites that are town-owned properties that would even be feasible for us to consider. So that'll be something to address when we discuss whether we'd like to prioritize town-owned property over the other priorities.
Oh, so these are the only town-owned properties that we have, okay?
That have the reasonable amount of uh space.
Right.
Yeah, I think um I don't remember the specific number that Pete had pulled, but it was fairly significant amount of of properties around, again, listed properties.
I'm I'm looking back, and this has been several months ago, and so things change even in the COVID environment. Um, I think from our work with Kelly, we had six different properties identified that uh, you know, we we suggested they could, they could fit the, you know, four, four and a half acre requirement. And that and that's where the process stopped from from my perspective. And this does not include town-owned sites. These are listed um private sites.
So, go ahead.
I think what'd be helpful is if we kind of um go back and address each question individually, um, kind of hear the priorities of the board um for each question, and then towards the end, we can have a moment for public comment to address those questions as well. How does that sound, Mayor?
Oh, well, it sounds fine. I I it it absolutely sounds fine. So I think I think the priority from the 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 studies and the the groups was to put it on town-owned property. That was clear. And we only have two here, but there are some other properties that are pretty nice as well that logistically might be good. So I I So I, I, I think it's time to bat some of that around, don't you think?
I think so. Hey Randall, would you mind if I can share my screen again?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so I guess now we're, the question has come up now as to what is the board's feeling? Do you want to pursue town owned property with this? Or would you like to see the other areas as well?
In this section, or are we going to go through the, the questions?
Well, let's go, go through the question. Go ahead, I didn't mean to jump.
Oh, that's okay. I think they all kind of correlate with each other, so I'm sure we'll kind of weave in between them. So I think the first question to discuss would be the preferences of a campus of municipal services or only one building on the site. The campus could look like town hall, a separate public works building, recreation center, library. And these could be built in long spans of time. The benefits of a campus, there's an ease of access for residents. It's kind of a one stop shop. So if they go into town hall to pay their water bill, then they could stop by the other locations to do what they need to do. And it means one purchase of land, it's not several purchases of land as we build upon this campus. The only considerations that we should look at for having a campus is that we do have to have that larger land. And there is a limitation with the town owned property that we already have if we do decide to move forward with the campus. So I give it to the board for discussion.
I have a couple of comments on this piece. Based on those campuses should include, I know that's not a limited list of what could possibly be there. But of things on that list, I know that we are growing our library already. It is a tiny facility for a growing community. Recreation Center is obviously a, a large need for a community. I know we haven't gone through that plan yet, but it is something that will be, will happen in the future when, I don't know. Community event spaces. Our town is known for community events, yet we have no community event centers that can fit our community. We've heard about this from the CAC that we're outgrowing our, our park where we hold these events. And again, this is going to be a major need and a core of Wellington and the people who live here. Knowing that those are all upcoming items that need to be addressed. I don't know why we wouldn't be smart in this project to be able to accommodate that rather than going through the process of acquiring and finding land again in the future, which could be consolidated within one area and provide that cohesiveness to our town hall. What I think of when I see this is like civic center park where they have event space, multiple government buildings, and then the opportunity to grow, maybe a park, something like that. An opportunity to have those things in one piece that creates that community feel. That's my thought on the complex. So I'm, I'm in favor of a complex.
Anyone else?
I'm in favor of a complex, a limited complex, I guess I would call it. I do not think that public works and town hall, recreation center and library mesh together. Typically, you, I, in my mind, I consider public works as the yard for all the towns equipped, repair shops, that type of thing. And, you know, I don't think that that would particularly fit well unless you had a hundred a campus and you could put this thing, you know, way at the, the far edge of, away from all the other stuff. So as far as a public works department, other than offices for, you know, the, the engineering staff and all that, which would be housed in the, I would think inside of the town hall building. I don't think that should even be considered in this. As far as the library, recreation center and community event space, obviously, those are all kind of, two of them are, one of them is, is a, is a high level necessity. The library is obviously in place and it's functioning and it's outgrowing itself very quickly. Community event spaces are, 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 you know, something that'd be nice to have. But the reality is, is to house a complex of this size that would need to accommodate all this, I think it would be outside of town, on the outskirts, which you would lose your cohesiveness of, of town events. Everybody being moving away from our downtown where we've been focusing for so many years on trying to have our, all of our events on the main street area and in the old town area. So, I mean, I think we could do something with a library inside of, inside of a town hall building, saturation too. I mean, I think there's a lot of options there. I, I've been inside the, the town hall in Millikan and it houses the, the administrative offices. It also has the senior center, like a nice senior center in it. I believe it also has the public library all under one roof. And, and it doesn't seem to be cramped and it doesn't seem to be a gigantic building either. It's a two story building. So I mean, I think there's some options there. And I, I would agree that it doesn't belong in downtown. Downtown should be commercial spaces. We should, you know, it should be redeveloped or more development should be done down there as far as businesses, restaurants, retail, that type of thing. So, you know, I don't think Cleveland Avenue is the place for town hall. I mean, I'm kind of guess I'm moving into what I think the places, the place I think it belongs is at library park personally. I think it's a good centralized location for further growth as the town expands. I think mostly the expansion will be to the north and to the west up in that area. So that would end up being almost in the center of town, probably twenty, twenty-five years down the road in my mind, so. That's my two cents on all that.
Good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I had, I, I mean, I, I think some of those comments are quite good. You know, one of the things that I was struck by when Randall first presented was the idea that can you spur growth in a particular direction? And it sounds like north seems to be pretty reasonable choice because east is problematic. And west, we run into Waverly and south doesn't really do it. But, you know, certainly one of the things I would consider is, you know, do you put it along six further up to spur development there? That may be a good idea, maybe it's not. Certainly what John, trustee Jerome suggested about a library park. I mean, that I'm assuming would take out the ball fields. Would that be probably a true thing? And then whether that makes sense for the community? I mean, that's, that's a completely, hadn't seen that, that property. I don't think it's going to fit on down in, on main street at all. I think we don't want to, because whatever this property is, is going to come off the tax rolls, which is also part of the reason I would not necessarily like to develop the C three, potential C three out on the highway on Sixth Street. But I, I think, I think we do need to kind of narrow down to figure out what possible properties are. Again, is it a square? Is it longer and thinner? Because that will drive the actual building design. So again, those kind of my, my, my thoughts. And again, you know, maybe the library park does make sense. That's, so that's a new thought for me.
I will mention with library park, we do have the Wilson Wells, the micro filtration plant, the recreation shed and those two ball fields, as well as the leaper center on it already currently. So those would be things that we'd have to consider moving forward with that location.
Other thoughts?
So I think that my thought process would, I, I would agree that one of the major themes that came out of the meetings was that we try to utilize existing land. I know I was one of the people who was pushing for us to really push farther north to help spur growth there. But that really did not seem to be borne out by a lot of the rest of what was said. Because I think to do that well, there would be, there would need to be some additional property probably purchased. With that note, I think that I would lean away from doing a complex. I like the, because the theme that generally was put in there was that from the one day that I was there, the comments that were made, while they were about, yeah, it'd be nice to have, it was more of having the town services in one place. So engineering, planning, administration, HR, finance, billing. And as nice as it would be to have some of those other things, I think that those are things that should be addressed as we get there. I don't think it's something, again, if the primary thing that we're trying to do is do a better job with the staffing and bring access to the local government, that that should really be the focus. And then when we, if we need to incorporate or build out the library, we focus on that. And in terms of a recreation center, when the citizens are ready to say, hey, we're willing to, you know, raise our taxes to pay for recreation, recreation center, we, we address that. In terms of community event spaces, I think we kind of do the same thing there. We obviously need to work out things like the Fourth of July and things like that we've discussed. But even, I don't think this would be something where I don't see us being in a place to be able to put all of this onto one piece of property, especially right now. I think we have a lot of other priorities that need to be a bigger focus than that. And I would prefer to see us focus on just getting the town hall so we can get everything in one place. And then as the, as we get to a place where our utilities are stable, everything else is stable. We have enough finances to be able to say, hey, we can now start to look at a rec center or upgrading or improving those community spaces. Fantastic. But I think right now the priority needs to remain on the, the waste water plant, the water plant. We've got major projects ahead of us for the next few years that are going to be incredibly expensive. So I think that when we're looking at the town hall, we need to be looking at, okay, the main thing that people wanted was just the town staff in one place. So I think that really needs to be the focus. And doing that on town owned land, again, helps us to decrease the cost that we're going to have to go for with purchasing additional land if we were to try and do something else.
So are you more in favor of the library park than John?
Uh, yes, that would be my, that's what I would say. Cause I, I agree with trustee Jerome that I think getting that north of town was, would help encourage. Cause I agree, that's our, we have no one to the north to bother with as we grow farther north. So I think if we can get out of downtown and push more of that business to the north, I think that would be great. Obviously, I don't know how much those ball fields are used. I know we have quite a few much higher, I don't know what the word is, I don't know, tech or nicer fields up at Wellington Community Park. But I, I personally, I'm not there, so I don't know how much use is happening on those ball fields down there by library center park. So that might be, obviously, we need to take that into consideration as well. But, you know, potentially, we can make that a part of the property, right? We still have a park and outdoor area for kids to do things and keep that as part of that plan as we're putting it in.
Other thoughts?
I think that the complex concept is forward thinking and addresses some of the future needs of the residents that they express that are important to them. Whether or not it's on property that's owned by the town or we acquire property. I think that moving forward, answering that first question will kind of determine that. But there, there are lots of opportunities through DOLA and the energy impact grant to help offset the, the cost of acquiring land for projects like this. So I'm split on whether or not the town needs to acquire land or whether or not we utilize land that's already owned. I would be interested in exploring either idea, whichever one is going to fit the needs best of the complex concept. So that's, those are my comments. I think that everybody else has had some really great insight and information to add. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Let me see if I can summarize a little bit of this. The sixth, go ahead Wyatt.
Who is speaking? Sorry. Still can't hear you. I can see your mouth moving though.
Wyatt, can you hear us? Can't hear you, brother. Okay. While we're waiting for Wyatt, the Sixth Street property, over the last couple of years, we've been talking about that as a strategic piece of property to enhance some, some decent commercial growth for the town. And it is strategically located. It's one of our best pieces of property left in this town right away that can be, that can attract some decent revenue for the town that, that, that the town does need. You can't just keep doing municipal buildings and things that do not generate revenue. That is, that was the focus on that. One thing about this piece of property that I'm looking at that did come up in past discussions was it would be nice to replat that piece of property because it doesn't lend itself very well in the configuration that it is. And that's not the current case. This is the original plat, so nothing's been done with that. However, I'm in favor of a complex myself with the idea of adding on and building on in the future. You have your property there for it. The town does want a rec center more than anything. And this, this property at Timming does allow that. It's big enough for that and you can add on and build on. And one thing it would do, it would, it would bring the infrastructure to that piece of property, which might attract that commercial growth that we need, because right now no one's buying it. Nothing's happening with it at all that I know of. And it's just sitting there still. So we could be a catalyst, there's a plus to that. However, you do give up some, some, some of that, that area. I've always liked the library park. Makes a lot of sense. Library is there, you can integrate it somehow, some way. It's big enough for the town hall. You can, and your, and your public works. Public works is not necessarily, does not necessarily have to be at the town hall. It really doesn't. It's a garage kind of thing. It's, it's industrial, it's what's working, it's a working area. But it's big enough for that. It really, and it would fit and it's out of the way. And it does match the other brick and mortar buildings that you got there. And it, it would, it would, it would fit in just fine. And you could use the other, the other ball fields and things like that on the schools for other planned events and things like that. I'm sure that can be worked out. I don't know about the ball fields. They do get used. They get used a lot. So we'd have to consider making another ball field somewhere else. I don't know if we'd have to get rid of the one on the southeast corner or not, to be honest with you. But the other one would have to go. Which other one you took? Both properties are fine with me for town owned property. And I don't mind looking at other properties either. I really don't. So I really don't have a preference so much for that as I do. Well, how much is it going to cost? And what are we going to get out of the benefit? It's cost benefit what we're after. And, and, and these two properties would probably suit the bill for cost benefit. However, that, that Sixth Street property needs to be dealt with a little bit. It would, it would do everything we need, but we really do give up a lot by doing that. A lot of potential commercial. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not married to either one of them. And, and anyway, I'm not. So I, that's just my focus. I kind of, I kind of like the library part myself. Seems a little bit, it is out of the way, but it's, it's in, it's in a good area. And they're both good, so I don't know. But I'm not like trustee McDonald said, I'm not, I'm not opposed to other areas that are out there. The rec center doesn't have to be there. It really doesn't. It can be somewhere else, it can be its own thing. And a lot of them are, they don't have to be tied to this whole thing. I just said that we have that property. We do have it, so it is there. It's what's at work. That's the plus benefit on the Sixth Street. That's the only thing, so if you wanted to put it there. So that's all I've got to say on it. So if no one else has anything more to say, what's our next steps here?
Mary Hammond, I have several items to say, but they are more associated with separate questions. So I don't know if we want to go into that or if.
Well, we, we can, sure we can.
Jesse Knitson, can you, are you able to say anything now? Nope. No, you aren't.
Try calling in Wyatt on your phone. Try calling in Wyatt on your phone.
Um, while we're waiting though, my comment on on land is I would personally like to take the six and Wilson off the list to be considered. This is just so highly commercial opportunities. This, this is where Wellington will survive. In sales tax, uh, we can't, we can't um. Take that opportunity away. So I would say that 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 land off six and Wilson should not be considered for this project. Um, I do like the idea of the library park, Leaper Center area. Um, but with that understanding that any kind of complex developments would happen in phases. So that if that property were considered, I want to make sure that we plan it appropriately, so we aren't eliminating current resources on that property. Maintaining those until a time when we would be able to act, which is not in any current plans. Um, so it's very important for planning and when we're considering that property, um. Pete, that, that we'd be able to maintain all those resources while continuing with the town hall. But with that said, the push for. Improving opportunities for growth and infrastructure, in my mind, require new land. So I don't want to eliminate looking for that possibility. I think as uh trustee McDonald said, that is. It's forward thinking in order to include this within a complex because. I don't want to have to go through this whole search again in the future. If we're improving infrastructure, that gives a lot more opportunity for other surrounding development. Um, as well, and if there are ways for us to have that cost. Negotiated or with grants and in other sources of money for those properties, why would we not consider that? Um, so I personally, when it comes to location, would be interested in comparing the property at Leaper Center. And an offsite location for eight acres. A new purchase location and eliminating six and Wilson from the list altogether.
Okay. Wyatt's number is the seventeen nineteen number if we have to let him in so he can talk.
No, I think I'm in.
Oh, okay, cool.
So yeah, I think we need to be forward thinking here. We've got. A lot of facilities that we are going to need here coming up in the future, whether it's. Town hall building, the rec center buildings, you know, uh parks, wrecks, whatever. I don't think we can fit any of this stuff on the current properties that we own. Um, I don't want to see us take library park apart. I mean, we're limited on parks that we have right now, and I think that's a mistake to. To dismantle that park, um, just to put a town hall on it when. We're going to have to purchase property in the future to be able to do what we want to do anyway. And so I'm, I'm thinking more outside of town, um spur some development around those areas. Give us the property and the space we need to to work with. And let's do it right if we're going to do it. We've been shoehorning ourselves into little buildings and and. Houses around town and and just trying to make this thing work and limping it along for years. We just, I think we need to just do this thing and do it right.
Okay. I'm not in disagreement with any of that. Anyone else?
I think the trustee White House, I think uh trustee Knudsen's raised some good points. Um. Yeah, I'd be worth, again, complex idea, and I think I'd be in favor of looking, looking somewhere else. I mean, until we have an option, it's hard to weigh. What possibilities could be? So it's certainly to look. Uh, you know, doesn't mean we're going to buy, but certainly worth looking at those opportunities.
Yeah, I think that's why we hired these guys to go find those properties for us to look at.
Wyatt, which direction are you thinking? I mean, north, south, east, west?
Uh, the, the piece I looked or was considering when we sat down for these initial um meetings was. Basically, that southwest corner of Highway one and nine. Uh, it's a nice location as you're kind of going out of town. It's kind of uphill, so it presents itself well. Um, it'd be part of that roundabout or intersection interchange, whatever we do there. Um, it would promote growth more to the west. Um. You know, it would tie into some of the utilities that we already have there, being our water and sewer kind of run down that area. And I think, I think it'd just be a good location next to the school there and tie everything together.
Talking the cornfield right there at the, at the south of the school?
Correct.
Well, the other aspect of that, I think that's one of the initial suggestions I had is it kind of ends as a sort of a bookend. From the entrance, sort of when you come into town from the highway. You come down the main street, there is that new school going in and you know, that could be, again, that sounds like a reasonable opportunity.
This is the first place I thought of.
Now, there's nothing wrong with that location, considering if we can buy it.
Hmm, obviously.
I guess it's, what what are we at here, Randall? What are we, what are we, you looking for orders to go find something to go do and put some further projections together or what?
I, I think, man, I don't think we have to answer tonight. I think it's truly to just spur the, the effort back, get our minds. Around this again, um, you know, the idea today was to kind of get it back in the forefront of thought. So we can try to wrap it up and and get, you know, get to where we originally started. I think the conversation was really good tonight, um, a little circular at times, but. I do think it's probably worth investigating library park. It seems to be something that has come up. Um, it, it really doesn't hurt to take and put a concept plan down on there and and look at the numbers. And see what it might take to develop that. Um, you know, you'll have to weigh that along with the, the opportunity for other properties. Um, you know, the, the one that you mentioned, um, uh, out on the west end of town uh would be one that. Um, you know, if he could start to look at or other properties similar to that. Um, and and look at what we might be able to carve off of of a larger piece of property like that, whether it's, you know, eight acres or. Twelve or whatever makes the most sense. So I think from my standpoint. I, I would say let's investigate library park as an option. Again, you don't, it's, it's really just an exercise at this point. And then let Pete kind of dig in a little bit more into a couple larger pieces of property around town. There might be on the north or the west side of town that's continued to be kind of the area that people have focused on when they talked about. Possibilities of pulling it out of downtown, where would it go? Um, north and and west are the two. Kind of areas that have been, um, you know, mentioned the most. And um, I think we'll stay away from the east side and we'll stay away from right downtown on the main, main um. Street and um, take a look and see what we can find. Uh, and again, some of those properties might be. Um, properties that are unlisted, but maybe we could have some discussions and even even raise it and see if there's a possibility there, but.
Yes, yes.
And uh, Mr. Johnson, if I can make a recommendation. I believe that Cody Bird and some of the trustees are working pretty diligently on our uh comprehensive master plan. And have kind of outlined and identified some key growth pockets. Um, it might be worth chatting with them to kind of get an idea of where the best. Um, growth or target areas might be for possible acquisition.
Okay, yeah, I can absolutely do that, um.
Absolutely. I think that's important to do that. There's a, there's a good, there's a few more pieces of property over there on the west side of town that were not mentioned that. Are bare and uh, they're in the infrastructure area as well.
Well, I think if some of those pieces, you know, certainly that you've thought about, you, you guys are. Locals, you know, kind of the pieces of property around town that might make sense, whether they're on the market or not. If you could kind of give that. Uh, to Hallie or to Patty and kind of say, hey, here's the pieces of property I've been thinking about, or this would be good for it, like the one we just talked about. Um, out there, if you could get that to them and they can get it to Pete and I, we can begin to start kind of narrowing down on that. Ultimately, I think what we want to do is have. You know, two or three sites that we've narrowed down on. We've got a concept plan on it and we've got a concept budget to go with it. That you guys can look at and say the cost benefit of going here is X and it checks all these boxes. Um, and it doesn't check these, but when you put them up next to each other, hopefully you'll have a much easier decision. But right now, we're just trying to get it honed down a little bit, so we know where to focus. And we can get to that two to three faster.
Certainly, we can hone in on library park and see what that's all about, you know, even though we don't have big. Uh, enthusiasm about it. Um, but it's certainly, that's an easy target. The other ones, now we'll get you a list.
Perfect.
See if they're, see if they're available.
And I think that, I like that as well, because if we can get some ideas as far as what the cost is and also what would have to be given up, I think it would be great for us to maybe. As we're getting to the point where we have some more concepts and ideas of what that would look like is. Find the, whether it be a town hall or something like that, where we can bring that back before the public, because then. Where we had overwhelming people saying, we want you to use town owned property, well, if they realize, well, that means we're going to lose library park, maybe people are going to realize, okay. We're not so tied to this idea of using town owned property, but I think it's great to be able to. Give a couple of options so we can say, well, if we meet this, this and this, this is what we can do. Here's what you can see what it can look like, but if we were to not do this, we could do this, this and this, and I think that'd be very beneficial.
Something else I think we, we should consider when discounting library, we can, the thought of losing two baseball fields. Is uh, we have one park that's being way underutilized right now over in the metals that can easily accommodate. Uh, a baseball field and also uh, since it doesn't seem that, that we're going to be putting the brakes on any housing developments anytime soon. We require baseball field or athletic fields be incorporated in some of these new. Housing developments that will be coming down the pike over the next few years. So I mean, I think it's an easy fix. Um. I know everybody, you know, we're going to lose a couple of baseball diamonds, you know, that's kind of scary at first, but if you think about it. But they could be replaced by much better facilities. Down the road, that, you know, even at the same time or even before, um, you know, that stuff's like. You know, that stuff starts to happen at like, if, if that's where we end up at library park. I mean, we could have two brand new baseball diamonds. Built in other, just, you know, other facilities way before we ever break ground on, on a, on a new town hall. Um, just at the rate we're moving right now. So I mean, I think there's. If you're going to think in the long term, you got to look at that fact too, that, you know, that's always a huge possibility and. You know, obviously, when we're making development agreements and allowing development to come in. Stipulation is, we want a fantastic baseball field in, in your development. That's kind of our privy to do stuff like that, so. Okay. All right then. You know, the comments, I guess we'll uh.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
And great discussion from the board and thank you for your consideration and guidance. Um, one of the, the things that I would like to throw out there for consideration. Um, that I think would help guide uh Randall and Pete. Uh, and staff and and kind of bringing more options back to the board for consideration. Um, one of the businesses look at when they're trying to find a location is. Uh, you know, what do they want to be located next to? What, what's their vehicular access? Is it got good visibility for the residents? Is there good visibility for visitors? And these are things that we haven't really talked about. There's some kind of programmatic elements to site selection that haven't really been discussed. Uh, I just think it'd be really helpful if we could get a couple of key indicators from the board on. The types of things that you would be looking for, for a town hall location, and that would help refine the property search.
Those are good points, Cody. I think we could use some recommendations. You know?
I have a list of a couple items, if I could start.
Sure.
Um, what's important for me is that it's a state of the art building and feature for our community. Um, it shows opportunities of either. Uh, sustainable kind of technologies, um, technology or um, a look of it, feel of it. That shows that it is a state of art building. Uh. The design and architecture of it is not something I'm commenting on. The point is that it's a forward thinking. Uh, community that we're smart planning, and I think that can be indicated by the view of the building and the, and the site itself. Um, I want it to be very visible to the community, um, yet not taking away from commercial opportunities. So, um. That's really important to me that it is seen uh and that builds that sense of community, um, and it's easily accessible. Uh, but um, otherwise, those are, those are my main points of what I'm looking for. Let me look at my list real quick. Uh, and the other part of it is I want to make sure that we're acknowledging the Wellington of the future, not what it looks like right now. So if it, we're talking about it being surrounded by other types of development, we have to think of what those might be. In twenty years, not what's currently there right now. So if we're talking about sites near the high school. Obviously, there's going to be some significant development in that area in the next twenty years. What might that development look like? In order to be a neighbor of the town hall. I'd hate for us to look at it right now and say, there's nothing out there. Why would we even consider it? Because the Wellington of the future, what we're building this building for, won't look the same as it does right now.
I mean, there's also, I mean, this is a civic building, so having a presence on the street. As Cody had, had mentioned and and access and all that, I think. You know, while earlier on, we talked about, oh, could we have it on Main Street, but. I don't think for the size of it, it's just, it's not doable. But having a civic, you know, having it placed in a manner that does have some symbolic, you know, again, anchoring the other side of Main Street is. With Wyatt's suggestion, I think is certainly of uh, of value.
Yep. Now, I don't think Main Street's an option. Okay. So if I'm understanding everybody, we got an easy target, that's, that's library part. Uh, we need to come up with some other properties to help Randall out. And um, Cody, that might be good for you to help weigh in on as we go forward here, you know, to, to look at where we're. Where the growth is being pushed and uh makes, where it makes sense to put it. There's properties over there on the west side of town. There are a lot of them. And um, and they're, 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 they're there, so they got to fit within the cop plan, fit within the, the future of the, what we're talking about. I think that would be a good one for you to weigh in on, Cody, down the road.
Absolutely, and I, I will certainly do that, mayor. Thank you for that opportunity. Um, I do tend to agree that the, the Highway one corridor, um, as we've looked at in our comprehensive planning efforts. Our steering committee is taking a look at our, our future land use map draft currently. Um, the Highway one corridor is looking uh pretty important to the town's future growth and development, um, and commercial growth. Uh, and there are, as the mayor pointed out, certainly several opportunities in that corridor. Um, some other, other things that the board might want to consider. Um, you know, does, does a corner lot make a difference for visibility? You might think about what types of, of neighbors you could locate next to in the short term and what types of neighbors you might have in the future. Um, what types of land uses would, would you want to see a town hall located next to? Um, we can certainly look at a lot of different angles and options from that standpoint. Um, and we have some ability to help, help foster who our neighbors could be through the provision of, of utility, infrastructure extensions. Um, and I throw out there too, one of the other possibilities that a, that a lot of communities will look at when they're citing. Uh, public facilities is, are there existing development proposals where there's an opportunity to partner with a developer? To uh utilize some of the infrastructure that they're already extending. And how do we address land acquisition through a development agreement standpoint? All of these are, are options and opportunities that we can take a look at uh with, with Randall and Pete and their team. Um, so we appreciate the opportunity to, to continue looking at some of these options.
Mayor Hammond, Mr. Bird, I have a couple of just short questions and a, and a quick comment. Relative to the infrastructure that you're, um, that you've talked about. From the town's perspective, does it make sense on the west side to. Um, develop a municipal complex um, north or south of the high school for development. Purposes, like, does that help extend? Like, does that help extend the community towards that section of town or does it make more sense? Like I'm thinking, like, is it going to take 20, 30, 50 years to get? Development that far past the high school that it makes sense or does it make sense based on the growth rate that we've been seeing? In the last, you know, five or 10 years to, to have it on the, the southwest side.
You know, my, my take on what I've seen from growth and development patterns and what we know of our existing infrastructure. And what's likely to occur in the, in the short term future. I would suggest that south of Cleveland would be an appropriate consideration. Um, east or west of highway one, I don't think makes a, a huge impact in my mind. Um, but I, I say south because that's an area that we have some infrastructure. We've got a lot of our trunk infrastructure. Um, in that corridor, um, and it's going to be kind of the low hanging fruit for future development. I think it's going to take a lot more effort for the town or a developer to begin to push some of the infrastructure needs. North of the high school site. Um, I think it's, it's going to be. Uh, I think what we're going to see from, from the natural progression of development is that the southern area of town is going to develop faster than the northern area of town.
Thank you. So. My two, um, my two points that I, I wanted to throw in there is I wanted to be sure that we, um. Take a moment to really. Address the community part of the aesthetic look of the new town hall. That has, that's been a really hot topic about what. The theme of our community looks like, you know, um, so I don't want to go down that huge rabbit hole right now, but that's. One element that has been brought up multiple times that I think is, is really important and a great way for the community to feel like they're involved in this project. As if they kind of get to help participate in the theme or the idea or the design of what. That, that future town hall looks like. And the second ask that I have is. It's kind of one of those airy fairy, um, elected official things is that I'm really excited about. Commitment and consensus to this decision moving forward. This has been. A, a really difficult moving target for the town for many years. So. I'm really excited that this board, um, is here to come together for a commitment and consensus about. This, um, this project. So, so thank you.
Any further comments, last comments? Okay. Let's go ahead and move forward, Randall. We'll try to get you some properties to look at and. We'll probably take a stab at that library park because it's an easy target. It sounds like Sixth and Wilson's off the target because we want to serve that, we want to save that. For strategic growth, which makes sense right off the highway for attraction. So. That's where we're at today, it looks like.
It, well, we'll, we'll push forward with that and we'll get a meeting scheduled with Cody as well to discuss kind of, uh. Where the, the, um, overall master planning, community planning has been going and where his thoughts would be. Um, around, um, locations so that we can give. Pete a little bit narrower target to hunt for and, um. And then we can develop some sites, uh, down in those areas and come back to the board with, with some options.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate your hard work and appreciate board input. Thank you all. That takes us to our next. Strategic plan survey results. Mahala. What'd you find out?
Mahala. Sorry everyone, it stole my, stole my display. Hold on just two seconds and we'll be right back at it. All right. Let's try that again. How about now?
Right.
Perfect. Can you see my screen? Perfect. All right. I'm excited to share with you tonight the results of the strategic plan survey. I will keep in mind, this is just a very. High level overview. We were able to gather a lot of feedback. So thank you to the community. Um, for all of those comments, definitely lots of thoughts and feelings and excited to bring that to you all tonight. So just again, high level overview here. The survey was open for about two weeks. Gathered in total 67 responses, 61 of those self disclosed as residents with six either not responding or. Indicating that they were not residents. And if at any time you do have questions, feel free to stop me, but I will have a slide for questions right at the end. First question that we asked was about the town's mission statement. So, um, asking if. Folks agreed that it was an appropriate mission statement for town government. So that question. Gathered 32 yes responses for just straight no's and 20 no with a detailed explanation. So I'll kind of go over some general themes. Um, a lot of people indicated that the statement was in line with the community values. If the statement was executed. So folks expressing that they did want to see those things come to life or be actualized. Um, and that, that those were appropriate government jobs. Um, there was also a few sentence or a few statements that I kind of melded into. It could be summarized as providing essential, essential municipal services. So making sure that we are really focused and on task with, uh, the jobs that we have to do and really sticking to the role of government. Moving right along to the vision statement. So the question we asked folks in just an open forum was, do you feel the vision statement matches our community values? Currently as written, 30 respondents said yes, 14 said no. 13% or 13 people had answers that were not applicable. They were just generally about. How town services are currently provided, not necessarily about the vision statement itself. Um, and then eight of those folks had questions about the structure or, um. Way that the mission statement was currently stated, being that it is in present tense. And so, um, kind of. Tying that into the general themes as well, they, there was some comments about, um, the current tense used. To, to describe the mission statement or the vision statement, um, and thinking that that maybe needed some tweaks, but that the meat or the bones was, um, there for that statement. There was also, um, eight questions about the word small town or the use of that language with recent growth. Some folks really loved that. Um, and some folks thought that maybe we had outpaced that small town feel that maybe that's something that Wellington used to be, but not quite anymore with recent growth. Moving on to the top three priorities, what should Wellington's top three priorities be over the next five years? This was the most answered question. Um, all 67 respondents, um, got back for this one. So water was overwhelmingly that top response for sure. 47 folks indicated water, um, with those focuses being on quality, lowering the cost and completing the water or sewer plant expansion. Um, another top result was business, kind of a split bag, whether we wanted more or less business, more growth or less growth. But definitely 30 respondents, um, included the word business and then attracting, um, locally owned shops. Had a few really great responses about wanting to be able to really support local. Um, and so be, being able to bring more businesses here so that they can do that. Folks talked about increasing inventory for brick and mortar locations, um, really wanting to, to build up that main street. And also having accessible processes for starting or moving a business to Wellington to really attracting, um, unique businesses. Last one there was infrastructure improvements. This is kind of a wide array of things, but. Um, 25 responses did include the word infrastructure, things like streets, drainage, potholes, general safety of sidewalks and things like that. Beautification of Main Street, making sure it's really someplace that people want to come, um, for years to come. And then systems in place to support growth. So that looked like a lot of mentions of water again. Um, or just making sure that we have the road and traffic studies done to make sure that new growth and supports the residents that are already here as well. Sustainable infrastructure and for these, um, key focused areas, I'll really just super high level because the feedback was. Um, really diverse in terms of what, what people were focusing on, but I'll, I'll just highlight those key. Key themes that came up multiple times for goal three, plan and develop purposeful facilities. This one in particular got some feedback on elaborate on current plans, although I'll make a statement that they really all did. Um, that people want to know more about what, what was going into these plans and that we can do a better job of communicating that. So elaborate on the current plans for that, but purposeful facilities for who was this talking about? Specifically the town hall that's cut upcoming plans are talked about, or is this maybe a rec center? What does purposeful facilities mean? And then for goal four, talking about enhancing and exploring partnerships. Folks really wanted to know what the benefit of partnerships would be for them. Um, and what, what, yeah, what the results of those partnerships would be. Intentional growth and development had some questions about what balanced and resilient revenues meant. Um, just asking for a little bit more transparency here was a word that was mentioned frequently. And then increasing opportunities to support local, as I mentioned earlier, was brought back up again in this section. Um, maintaining unique businesses downtown and on Main Street and then, um, kind of again, that split feedback between encouraging and slowing growth. For community engagement, we, this was, um, general positive feedback, but definitely that folks want community engagement to happen. 36 folks agree with the current community engagement, um, statement. 15 said yes, just as a direct quote. Um, and then there was questions about a recreation or a community center here. Some other comments, um, that will definitely be taken into consideration, I think. Um, increased website usability is something we're working on. And then increased access to information for, again, that increased transparency was definitely voiced here. Not necessarily about the statement itself, but more about what folks want to see out of community engagement. And then organization, organizational strength, that last one questions just about. If this is an internal goal or if it's something that should stay external. Overall, the feedback was positive for supporting, um, efficient internal operations. And then there was another, a question that was only mentioned once, but it was mentioned during. Uh, the board meeting and then again during the survey. So I wanted to just make that. Um, clear that we did see that question was about the meaning of on and off boarding, um, being a little fuzzy for some folks. Think that will draw us to the end there. What questions can I answer?
Or members got any follow ups?
Well, I, I just have a comment at this point. I, I have to say, reading over the raw data that we've got some very. I would suggest unvarnished responses from people and I actually think that's really wonderful. Because, uh, well, you know, you're getting a sense of what people are really thinking about and, and sometimes that doesn't come through. So I think the fact that it was sort of an open ended question where people could comment. I think brought in a bunch of information, which I think is of value to me. So, and I do appreciate. The summary of this because looking at the raw data was not necessarily the easiest, uh, format to read. Um, but it, it, I think it was a great thing to do.
Other comments?
Where do we go from here? Are we going to make some recommendations and changing of wording? Or is this just additional input for additional transparency and explanation? A lot of these could be resolved potentially through education. Um, what are our thoughts on that? And then also before I forget, um, I work in business intelligence. Um, Mahala, I think you did a really great job of looking at these results analytically. So I really appreciate that and a great presentation. And same goes to Holly for earlier. Very well done. Thank you. But next step, so it's my question.
Good question. Other thoughts?
So first of all, I'm starting to really appreciate town staff getting this together and in such short order. I think you guys had the survey out within days. Of that board meeting. So I really appreciate you guys getting it out. You did a great job of allowing the open feedback and as trustee Whitehouse. Mentioned we did it and a congra, my hat is off to Mahala on getting this all together. Um, and. I think that there were a lot of themes, you hit them very well, just kind of overarching throughout that. And I think that, um, as trustee Kenny had suggested, I think there is definitely some area where education could potentially help with. Solving some of the issues. I also do think that there were some, um, very specific comments throughout, just in terms of, hey, if we switch the wording for this or this. That would better reflect what we hear you saying. I, I would love to see us maybe just make some minor tweaks because I think. In some of the areas that maybe it's just, okay, hey, let's shift the wording or pick a different word here, pick a different word here. Um, I think that would be fantastic. Um, I think that one of the. And for reading through the raw data is there's so much in there, I think that was beneficial for me to read as a trustee that was outside of the strategic plan. That just helped to inform me where our citizens are at, um, for those that chose to respond. Because as was said, there was a lot of just very raw feedback of, hey, here are where things at. And I think that. One of the key things for us to keep in mind is that, you know, if we are going to say things like the, the mission statement is. That it's key that we execute on that, right? Cause that's one of the things we talked about, providing those great municipal services. And that was one of the overwhelming comments was that. Why are you saying this? Because that's not the way it is currently. And I think that that's something that we just need to, I think it's great that, I think the board saw that and we. Said, this is where we need to be. This is what we want it to be. And so we're trying to set that vision moving forward. And so I think that's a part where the education piece comes in. Um, one of the real keys. That I think came out several times in there and I don't know how we adjust in the growth piece, but maybe we need to be more specific, at least in the short term. As to when we say the growth period, what that growth piece is, because there was a very consistent theme that. We want to see business growth, but people don't want to see more residential growth until we get the water situation under control. That was very clear throughout the, I would have, I rewent through them twice and I don't. I mean, I know people were there. Everyone kept saying, we want more businesses. We want to be able to see everything here in town. Um, I, maybe I missed it, but I don't think I saw one comment that said, I want to see more residential growth. Um, that was a pretty clear theme. So I think that. That is an opportunity for us to maybe look back at things and say, do we need to clarify that up again, especially as we're talking over the next couple of years that, hey, the really the focus is going to be. On infrastructure and, you know, what does that look like in terms of residential growth? Um, let's see. And then I would agree in the partnerships portion, that was another thing that kept coming up is who are we partnering, partnering with or looking to partner with more? And what does that look like? And again, that might be more if we just get that supporting documentation filled out a little bit better and maybe. Attaching that to the plan. So people can see all of the goals that are associated with that, that might help solve some of that because it might spell out, well, we're looking to work. More with C dot to deal with Cleveland and to get the bridge built on the off ramp and we're going to try and. Work better with Limer County with dealing with the new, the way, the, um, dump that's coming into town to high school, you know. It, just spelling out and maybe if that's more spelled out, that'll be better. And then the other key thing I think was just. Really having definable metrics as what is success in this specific goal look like? And again, I think. That will be coming into those supporting documentation, but I think just making sure that we have that as well as, okay. We say we're going to be targeting this, what does success on this look like? I think was something a lot of people mentioned. And I think that really, because they were just looking, when you say this, what does that mean or what are you trying to accomplish?
Other comments?
I just have kind of maybe a comment question. I don't know how it'll come out, but. I, I'm thinking back to two years ago, the first time participated in a strategic plan. Um, some of us here today were at that, uh, strategic planning session. Some of us weren't. Um, my feeling back then was I was being led by my nose down a very specific path. That was predetermined before the strategic plan. I mean, basically I felt as though the strategic plan had already been laid out and it was just, we were just being fed the information that we were. Um, being fed. And also at that point, it was made very clear that. You know, the strategic plan was, and there was a, a, a phrase that got used a ton for like the first. Three or four months after that strategic plan, 30,000 feet. I'm sure, uh. A couple of the trustees remember that term, 30,000 feet, 30,000 feet. It was drilled into our heads that the strategic plan was not a specific plan. It was a 30,000 foot high level. Just basic. Wants and needs with no real specifics. Um, that, that was left to the staff to figure out the, the hows and the, the whats and all that. And we're supposed to define the, what we wanted and everything else was supposed to be handled, um, at staff level. And, and I see a stark contrast between that strategic plan meeting and how. That strategic, strategic plan was laid out in this one, this strategic plan sees. And this one, this strategic plan seems to be more specific. Actually getting kind of really deep in the weeds on some of the stuff, maybe not so much the other. So I guess my question is, what is the proper strategic plan? It, it is, are we deeper into the weeds than we should be? Are we not as high out of the weeds as we should be? I, I guess I'm throwing this at you, um, Patty, um, having experience and, I mean. We have other board members on here that have been through different strategic plans. I'm sure trustee McDonald has been through. This is probably at least our second one. Um, Mayor Hammond and, uh, trustee Knutson and trustee Whitehouse, you were involved when I was involved in. And, you know, I'm just kind of confused how, you know, and I unfortunately I missed the session, cause I had other plans, but I was fine with whatever was gonna come out of the strategic, uh, uh, session. But I was very surprised when all this information started coming out of how down into the weeds it really was in comparison to the last time, um, we did this exercise, so. I guess I'm just looking for a little clarification, or is there really a, a way a strategic plan should be done? It's just kind of at whatever board's whim that is.
So. A strategic plan is built for the organization, so depending on the type, the size, the involvement of the elected officials or the organization that the strategic back plan is being built for, that, it really depends. So this is perfect for your size of an organization and for your size of municipality. Um, particularly seeing all the turnover in your, um, staff, you know, your director level and such. Because there needs to be a trust factor built with your community. And I think that's really important for the board of trustees as well as staff to, to create that bridge, to create that level of trust. So, you know, maybe we do get a little down into the weeds on a strategic plan, but I think that's okay. I think it's important that the community sees what our intentions are, see the what and the how. So the what is, what are we gonna do, what are the projects and how are we gonna get there? And how are we gonna measure that success? So this is, overall, I think this is great. I, I think, I think Cheryl did a great job on working with you all through this plan. Um, I think it's perfect for this size of an organization, like I said, and particularly where we're at. Um, you know, with the community earning trust, there's been so much growth that, you know, we have a lot of new community members. You know, let's get buy-in from them as far as, you know, the direction that the board of trustees wants to go with the community. So I think this is a really great first stab at, you know, the review. Uh, if there's areas that, you know, these main, um. Areas need to be addressed, you know, changing out some words, I think a lot of it, as several of the trustees said, I think a lot of this can be handled with education. And once we put that supporting document behind it, that talks about, you know, what those projects are. Um, and our steps to get there, you know, and that information will be provided, I believe we promised on a quarterly basis. Um, to the board of trustees, so, once this gets adopted, I'm gonna go through and start finalizing those, the, the specific action items and working with town staff as far as, um, how we, how we get there and making sure those steps look clear and, um, concise. And having some sort of measurement of, you know, we're half, you know, we're completed, we're behind, we're, you know, we're. You know, twenty percent complete, that type of information, so that everyone is aware of what's going on. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would like to add another comment and I could be wrong about this, but, you know, I did, was involved in the first. Well, I don't know if it was the first strategic plan the town did a couple of years ago, and this being the second. So I don't know what happened prior to my sort of being a trustee. I, I'm, I'm not necessarily aware that we have done this process before. And I think we're all, I mean, we were pretty green when we did it a couple of years ago, like, at least I was. So, I mean, I think, again, we do have staff, we had a lot of staff input on this one, it didn't come completely from us. And I think that's great, cause we have a better understanding of, we'll just have a better understanding, so.
Anyone else? Okay, the final, follow-up, final up, I'm really glad that, Patty, you got staff and Mahalan, people together to go back out and do that extra effort. And get some further input to clarify what you're trying to refine and use that to help do that. And I would imagine you would bring that back to us at some certain date and say, this is it, this is what we're doing. And, uh, uh, the first strategic plan, you know, it, it was a good start, it was a good start, it had some, it had some good, good bullet points. Uh, it wasn't rather, it wasn't refined, it was thirty thousand feet for sure. And we didn't make a lot of them, that's for sure. But, uh, you know, they're still here today. I, I'm really glad we got the feedback, a lot of it was. To the point as well, so then take that and refine this and let's go forward and, uh, make some results, so I like it. Anything else? If there's nothing else, I'd like to say thank you.
I'd want, and this, it's just if we can try to maybe either find different words or even define a lot of the buzzwords. I think that's where a lot of confusion came out, is people that are involved in government, you deal in government, you're, you understand words like, well, sustainable this. It means something different to Joe who lives down the street than it does to me as a trustee that was sitting there in those conversations. So if we can either, and I'm happy to help if we need someone to help kind of work that out to either.
I think that's gonna be necessary. I think, John, I think you're gonna have to help with that one. Cause I don't have my head wrapped around, if you could do that, that'd be helpful.
I would be happy to do that.
Some bullet, some bullet points.
Can we, I would just ask that trustee Gator worked with Mahala on any communication and messaging that's going out to the public? That is board messaging related. I think that she, she can help make sure that it's consistent with what the, the vibe of the board is at an entirety and that we don't accidentally start going down a lane that's maybe independent, so that would be my only request. I don't have a problem with trustee Gator doing that, I just ask that they work with, uh, a staff member to popular, properly put that message together.
That's why I said I'd be happy to help staff do it, I, I, again. I, and as other, I, again, if it's something the whole board wants to do, I think that'd be great, cause we were there. But I don't wanna tell everyone else, hey, you need to do work. I'm happy to be the one that sits down with staff and goes through this to get it done, if that's what needs to be done.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know how, how difficult you gotta make it. I mean, if you got some key words or some key bullet points to send in, then Mahala, send them in, anyone. You know, I don't think we're trying to make a statement, uh. And I, I agree with trustee McDonald, this needs to go through staff, this is just, if you got some key tweaks, send them in to her. They'll take them under advisement. Sounds good to me. You guys good?
Can I make one final comment?
Sure.
Kind of circles back to the, uh, part of community engagement that, uh, about increased website usability and better access to information. I mean, I met with Mahala last week, I think, and I don't know if you've been to the town website recently, but there's definitely been some formatting changes and there's definitely, I mean, a lot of stuff is, it seems to me has happened the last week to have a little better accessibility. It's, it's not so many clicks down and, uh, that, oh, I pretty much most of that happened in-house. So I think it's moving in the right direction, looks great, and I appreciate the hard work.
Those were my favorite comments to read, because I was like, Mahala is already on it, so, great job.
No, I'll, I'll second that. I had to go to the website today and surf it and find the strategic plan myself and I found it. That was good.
That's a win.
I called Patty first, though. Hey. Send it over, would you? No one answered. All right, everybody.
You called me today?
I tried calling you, Crystal. No one answered.
I don't even have a missed call from you.
I don't know, I, I, maybe I didn't, maybe I tried to email you, I gotta check on that. I know I called Crystal, but no.
Okay, I apologize. I really tried to answer my crystal calls.
Mahala had it, Mahala had it.
Okay, yay, it made you have to look.
I, I served it. Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening, it's good stuff, so we appreciate it. See you all next time.
Absolutely. Thank you.